Social Services, half-time public health for year-round, year after year, without the guarantee eighty thousand dollars. I understand we're using her budget. I understand we have to increase her budget every year. I'm always looking at, do we need to hire extra employees for twelve months? Or even, uh, part-time? Are these two offices necessary to have, to create a full-time position? Half in social services, half in, in, uh, public health? I, I understand the high point, the high season. I also understand the low season. I understand when people are off. But with the money, because it's available there, grant, that's, that's fine. I'm really concerned about being twelve months. I, I really think we need the public health part right now because of the paperwork that's involved and Shannon and Bernadette trying to do everything. But I really am concerned about the, the, uh, hiring of a new employee for half-time in social, for a year, half-time both ways. And I think we should look at that during the budget cycle. When and if you get the paperwork from the state for the eighty thousand dollars, that would help too. But I understand her budget. I understand she's got it. She has the largest budget. She has the biggest carryover. I got all that. But I also am concerned about placing people in positions, making new positions. And that's my comment all the time. I respect Lori, Lori's support of it. That's fine. But mine, that's my comment on, on this. And I understand the money part of it.
Can I, can I just offer a couple clarifying remarks? Uh, first of all, it's not a full-time. It's only three quarters time. Okay, so it's six hours as opposed to eight hours. Uh, the other thing is you always have the alternative to go ahead and do a temp hire, just like we did with the Ely bus drivers. Do a temp hire and see how things work out with state funding because we know we have to do something at this point to help public health. So if we want to go the route of doing a temp admin assistant for the time being to get this in place and then see how numbers and go through the budget cycle, so just take that, what did we say? Was seventeen thousand or ten thousand? For this year till June thirtieth. And in the meantime, we will hire a temp. And then in the meantime, we'll go through the budget process. And at seven o'clock, we'll know what that decision looks like. And that also buys us time to see if there's money available from the state.
I like that. Thank you. Does any other commissioner have a comment?
I, uh, I personally, if we, we have the need, it's, it's, uh, it has no impact on, on our general fund budget. This is, this is funds that, that are going to be expended into that budget and need to be utilized there and only there. And the part that, uh, that I really like is, is kind of the proactive approach, that we're getting into this and, and getting these people when they're younger and, and getting them into a self-sufficiency so, so we're not creating people that we're carrying on for, for a lifelong situation. So I, 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 that, that really rings well with me. So personally, I, I would support moving forward with this.
Ian, you got anything to add? You on the phone?
Yeah, I really enjoyed, uh, what Elizabeth just explained. I think that that is probably the best, uh, way to approach this. Thank you, Elizabeth. Clarifying, huh?
Travis, you got anything to say?
Yeah, I think I would agree with Ian and then Elizabeth's point made was, you know, do the temporary hire for this. And then, and then when the budget comes, we'll, we'll know where the state stuff is and at least be proven about it. So I'm fine doing that.
Okay, uh, all the commissioners have spoken. I think we've all got a general idea. I appreciate what you gave to us, Elizabeth. Uh, so right now I look for a motion. Do I do the motion on the agenda item until now the three? Or do I ask for a motion to do the temporary? Or what do I do?
You can just ask for a motion. They can motion what's on the agenda item or the temporary.
Thank you. So what I'm gonna do is ask for a motion on item B, which is discussion for possible action. The approval to hire a new employee that will be split between halftime, between public health and social services. Do I have a motion for that item?
So I'll move to make a, uh, what we refer to as a temporary hire for this fiscal year and then for the permanent hire, that all that be inserted into the budget.
Can we do that on this item?
So you can, you can make the motion to do, to approve the temp, your temporary hire now. Uh, the, the permanent position would be discussed in the future.
Yeah. So I'll end my motion, temporary position for now for this fiscal year.
I, I just want to be correct here. I got that. But what I want to do is see if we get a motion to approve the agenda item. And then if not, I'll ask for, can I do that? Or should, should I just do what Travis did?
It's, yeah, he made, he made a motion. And so you can, I mean, it's just, it's just regular process.
Okay, we have a motion by Travis to, uh, to hire a temporary. Am I right? Do I have a second on that?
Aye. Who said that?
All right, we have a second by Ian. Any further discussion?
My, my only concern with, with just opening up to a temporary is, is without opening it up for, for, to finish this year and into the next year, I think it, it shrinks our field of applicants and the, and the, the number of qualified people that we'll see apply for this. I think that if we, if we were to go into this where we, we have already forecasted the budget for this, she's already done the forecast on our budget for this next year, has the funds there, uh, that if we were to at least do, do the hire that is for the rest of this fiscal year and next year, then, then I think that would open us up to a, a field of candidates that might do a hell of a lot better job for us.
And I concur with that a hundred percent.
Okay. But for right now, we have a motion to, uh, do the temporary hire as suggested by the finance director. We have a second.
She said it, but she didn't suggest it. She says it was an option.
I know, but she gave us the, she gave us the opinion of what our options were. So the motion that we have on the floor right now is by Travis, second by Ian, is to go forward with the temporary and through the budget year to, to the end of the fiscal year. So that's the motion. And any other comment before we go, then I'll ask for the vote. So the motion to go with the temporary for now is on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Richard, Ian, and Travis? Opposed?
Nay.
Opposed Lori and Shane? Motion passed, three to two. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're gonna go back to the start of the regular meeting. And, uh, that will be, uh, our nine oh five planned item. It's on page two. Uh, so recess the county committee. What's it? Yeah. Recess the county commission meeting. Open the road commission meeting and open up the public comment. Any public comment on that?
There are no, there are no public comments.
Okay, there's no public comment? Okay, we'll go to nine oh five, page two, item one. Uh, discussion only. On the primary and secondary roads within White Pine County and county facilities completed and future projects, communications with corporations and government agencies. Bill Caldwell and today, Martin Trout is here requesting bill.
Bill apologizes that it couldn't be here. You have a family emergency to attend to. So as far as the road commission goes, activities for the road department.
Can you speak up a little bit? Speak into the mic.
As far as the, uh, road department activities go between January fifteenth through February eleventh, um, twenty twenty-one, um, the road departments have done maintenance on the toll road in the Lund area, two twelve north, Green Springs, Newark Valley, eleven, uh, WP eleven seventy-seven and twelve oh four. The bench road, the pub fifty road, um, roads in the Pleasant Valley area and some roads down in the Lund area, uh, along the Silver Creek, Black Horse, and the Old Seale. Uh, we continued with snow plowing in this time as needed. Um, we received approval of water use agency from Elka Mining Group and the old Hamilton Mine. And that's for a period of one year. Uh, we replaced, uh, signage on Sixth Street and Bill, uh, half of our, our operators attended a, a two-year planning course to be updated. Uh, the other half, well, well, within that it's, it's stacked throughout the department. Kind of happened now. Uh, we were cap out of Salt Lake City. Um, have a new set of, uh, cutting-edge picks for the graders out and they wanted us to try them. So we received a set of them at no cost to the county. And we're going to, uh, track their use agency if it makes sense for us or not. Uh, we received, uh, the RTC one ton flatbed that had been ordered. It has been delivered through the road shop. Uh, we completed the budget for public transit and RTC, uh, upgraded the North Diesel Shop with LED lighting or better than the sheeting. Uh, we received a new laptop and RT downloaded the diagnostic software for mechanics. Uh, we went to Las Vegas and inspected two transport trucks, two used transport trucks to replace a couple of our eighteen-broke trucks. Uh, but upon inspection down there, they weren't what exactly we wanted. So we passed on them. So we continue to look and try to get that done within this fiscal year. Uh, we signed a blue right-of-way agreement with the BLM on WP twelve, which is the Lund Dump Road. The old agreement had inspired eight, twenty-seven, twenty-nineteen, and a new agreement and it's in, uh, perpetuity. Um, and then, uh, as far as the county and city assistance agreement, the city owes the county forty-nine point five hours. That is increased by four hours, uh, since the last road commission meeting for Nanyoni Harris, um, taking care of the agendas, postings, and the meeting minutes for the RTC and public transit. Any questions?
Any questions by anybody on that update? Thank you very much, Martin. Anybody, no, no questions. So we're gonna move to item two. Item two is discussion for possible action. The approval to direct the public works director to inform all users of the road department's fuel line that only government vehicles are allowed to obtain fuel. You have a comment on that?
Um, just one quick, uh, comment. The reason that this is on the agenda, I guess, um, to my understanding, and I, I, I really don't wanna misspeak, so I'll be real brief. Um, one of the departments had a problem with their vehicle and I guess it was given approval from that department that, uh, this person could use their private vehicle and deal up with the road department. And that's just not the case. That shouldn't be happening. So, uh, Bill wants to, to make sure this is, is stated clearly and, uh, we let all departments know that, that only county, or, I'm sorry, not county, government vehicles will be allowed to use that fuel line.
Yeah, I remember hearing say that.
So I'll look for a motion to approve, uh, the fact that only government vehicles are allowed to use the fuel.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passion unanimous. Item three, discussion for possible action. The ratification of the road maintenance agreement between Infield Minerals Corporation and White Pine County.
So, excuse me. Uh, that item, uh, Infield, uh, working with the, uh, the BLM, uh, have received the permit to, um, drill some exploratory holes off of WP eighteen, which is Shelton Pass. And, uh, they would be building a, a new road across BLM from a point of Shelton Pass to where they'll be, uh, doing the exploratory drilling. Um, so Infield contacted the road department and they wanted, um, permission to, uh, to access the road. And so in working with them, we worked out a, a agreement. Um, so it, I'm sorry, it, uh, the timeframe was a lot sooner than what this commission meeting was. So we did give approval, uh, we've assigned an agreement with them. So now it just needs to be ratified.
Uh, this isn't gonna put us in the same type of position that we're with.
No, and, and, and Bill asked me to speak to that. So thank you for that. Um, Bill and I are working right now on a, a assistance agreement to bring to the DA for, uh, the DA's input as to the legal aspects, I guess. Um, and then to this commission to approve. Um, but this, it, it, it's, this is a little bit different. This is not the type of drill rig that is outlawed, that came in on eleven seventy-seven. This is a very small rig that comes in on one transport truck instead of several loads having to move this, like Alcoa on eleven seventy-seven, that type of a rig. So, uh, as far as, once the equipment is in there, the track over bulldozer to build the road again, then once the drilling operation starts, it's, it's only supposed to be for a very limited time. And maybe we'll be running a water truck, four loads over a twenty-four-hour period each day. Otherwise, the drilling operation's going on using about a three-mile section of our road.
And Richard, we had a discussion trying to get, uh, that there would be work to get a template, pretty much a standard, uh, verbiage.
Hey, I'm sorry. And that's what Bill and I are working on right now.
Yes, so that, and that would be what would be presented because the issue that we had before is when these quick things come in and out, there's nothing in there that says you will take care of, you are responsible for any damage or negative impact to the roads. And this one did not have that. So we're, they're gonna be working on, on making sure that we have a little bit better verbiage to protect the county.
Travis?
And I had discussed this with Brian, uh, when we were tightening up that ordinance. But the way, my understanding is, I mean, it's good courtesy, I guess, but that, you know, Bill doesn't have to bring these. It's his discretion, um, you know, to approve before the order. Uh, 'cause I don't, I mean, it's good practice, but I just see that it brings politics into stuff that doesn't need to be. Yes, we have the one bad situation. But so I just wanted to make that, that I really don't think that these need to come forward unless Bill has a serious issue with it and wants our opinion. But.
And I believe that, that our discussion was that, that they just needed to have this in place with Bill.
Yeah.
But does it not have to be brought to us for, for ratification or approval?
I'm glad that's cleared up and we make sure we're not getting into same mess.
Which, I mean, we can vote on this or just leave this discussion. I'm good, but I just, I think going forward, unless, you know, something crazy comes up, that as long as Bill has these in his files, that everyone's gonna.
Well, I think with our other situation, I would imagine that, uh, that our road department is gun-shy on this kind of stuff. So I, I would not have a problem if they would like our ratification.
Yes, yeah, totally fine.
Okay, then, any other comments? All, look for a motion to ratify the road ma, road, uh, maintenance agreement with Minerals Corporation.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passion unanimous. Item four is a discussion-only update regarding County Road eleven seventy-seven in Newark Valley. What do we got going? Martin?
Okay, so right now we continue to, uh, we continue to work on the, uh, south and north end of that road from the, where the drill rig access road is, um, to the south and, and the north. The north end, um, we're not hauling any more material on that at this time as, uh, I think Bill reported, uh, the last time. Uh, the, uh, gravel pit that we received access for was not the type of material that, that's gonna work for us. Um, the, uh, south end from, uh, twelve oh four to the, the real access road, uh, will be completely capped with screened gravel by the end of the day-to-morrow-like step. Uh, and then at this point in time, we're gonna pull the trucks out of there. Um, we're getting very limited on the screened gravel that we have out there right now because we're gonna need the screen and plant. And those are out there, we're gonna continue streaming material out there and, and building it. Uh, we're excited to kind of come to us. That road's in really good shape now from the south. The north needs more work, uh, as you know, we have, really have no water access there. So as it snows and we have natural monster work that we'll continue working out, we're really the way to there. If it snows next week, then it makes sense to go out there and continue bringing in bug dust and vacuum. That's what we'll do. Um, but depending on the next day, tomorrow, the agenda, uh, and what this commission decides to do as far as the road green builds, we'll make our decision on, on exactly how we're going forward, if that makes sense.
Travis?
Uh, I have, or I have information regarding, regarding the next one. Uh, I guess, Richard. Uh, so there's no other discussion on four, liquefied, discussing possible action to a length extent. And our cancel road agreement with Western Oil. Um, so yesterday afternoon, uh, I got a call from, uh, their investor guy. Uh, they sent all the money they owed. Um, but it appears Martin checked into it on invoice, uh, got missed. Uh, so I think it was probably just an oversight because they paid all the ones, uh, after that. So I think they just missed that one. Uh, so the past due, uh, is twenty-one thousand five sixty-four oh nine, and that's from January thirteenth. But they paid everything from the nineteenth forward. So like I say, it looks like an oversight. There's one, uh, that's due today, uh, twenty-seven, two, twenty-seven thousand, two ninety-two eighty-two. Uh, the gentleman that I spoke with yesterday said they would be paying that one as well, uh, today. So their total is forty-eight thousand, eight fifty-six ninety-one. Uh, and we still have the whole three hundred thousand bond behind that. Uh, so it looks like they're making the effort. Uh, I will, you know, depending on what the board wants to do. We could extend this a little. I can, we can extend it a month or whatever. And I'll just let them know, hey, you know, you got, you missed this one and that. Uh, you know, we're still more than covered with our, with our cash bonds, uh, bond. And they are, are making the effort, so that's my update. And I did talk with, uh, the owner of the drilling company. I put him in touch with Bill and the rig does leave. Everyone's all cool, on the same page around in the south like we discussed the last time this meeting was going. So I think everything's, you know, appears to be moving in the right direction, so.
Slow pay beats the hell out of no pay.
Yeah, that, uh, you know, that's, you know, I, you know, uh, before yesterday afternoon, I just, you know, I'll cancel it because nothing. And then we got it, so, you know, just keep, keep going a month at a time. And the day they don't do it is their last day, so.
So put this then on the second, uh, meeting in March.
Yeah, let, I'll pull the calendar.
Maybe the tenth is the first one, so.
The twenty, so all, uh, unless anyone has anything to add, uh, I guess I gotta have, ask for the motions, it's not a chair.
Um, I'll make a motion to go ahead and extend, uh, the agreement until the, uh, March twenty-fourth county commission.
Who said that?
Okay, uh, motion by Lori, second by Ian. I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? None, so four, uh, passed. Uh, Richard was absent. Agreement extended to March twenty-fourth for Western Oil. And appreciate them, uh, you know, doing, doing, you know, so far, uh, keeping up with their, with their problems. So thank, and thank you for getting this, Martin.
Thanks, Martin.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move to item six, uh, which is discussive possible action and approval minutes from the road commission meeting nailed January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, is there any edits or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the road commission meeting, uh, minutes from January twenty-seventh.
Uh, call for the second.
Next. Second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? None? Uh, question six passes unanimously. And I'll hand it back over to Richard. We're at, uh, uh, page two of the nine thirty natural resource.
Uh, which item are we on?
Uh, item B, nine, the nine thirty.
Nine thirty? Have we, we done all the other updates?
Yep.
And we closed the road commission meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay, I, and, and I'll just let the public know and everybody know. I've been on the phone, that was what that phone call was. It was with Senator Gogashia. And we've had, we have zero people in our DMV office here in Ian. I was on the phone yesterday with John Ellison, John Ellison, our, our assemblyman, and Pete, both. We're gonna get a person in the DMV in the next day or two. They'll be here on a temporary basis, but I feel, I feel like it's very important. That's why I took the phone call and just gonna, uh, let the public know. DMV's gonna send us a, a temporary employee to, so our office can open at least on a limited basis. And that's why the interruption. And I, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I felt that was very important.
I think we have somebody that's.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, okay. So we're gonna move on, we're on a nine thirty, uh, item B, you said?
Uh, one, yeah, number one.
Okay, I, uh, right now we're in the nine thirty, uh, item on page two, discussion only regarding the White Pine County natural resources and public land issues. Uh, it's a tracking list. Jeremy, are you on there?
Jeremy, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good morning, gentlemen commissioners. Jeremy Drew for your record with Resource Concepts. Uh, before I get into the list of.
Can you turn this up? Hang on a minute, Jeremy.
You go.
Just turn the volume up.
It's all the way up.
It's all the way up, okay. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Hey, before I get into the formal list, uh, just a couple of quick updates as it relates to the new Congress and administrative change. Um, Senator Cortez Masto is going to be chairing the Subcommittee on Public Lands, Forests, and Mining for Senate Energy and Natural Resources. Uh, seems like a very good fit for an event and to, to play that role. And it will be important on public land policy issues going forward. Uh, in a related note, they have a DOI confirmation hearing, um, yesterday. And Senator Cortez Masto asked them, uh, the potential nominee Congresswoman Deb Howland out of New Mexico, uh, she asked for a specific commitment on collaboration and cooperation with local governments. Uh, so good to see our senator, um, pulling for that, uh, coordination and collaboration when it starts to interfere as the new administration comes on. Uh, with that, I'll move to our list on ongoing items. Uh, the Pine and Lala Valley Pipeline Project, uh, over in Utah. If you'll recall, we signed a cooperating agency, MOU. We're under a non-disclosure agreement, so I can't provide any details other than to say myself and Mr. Korea are actively involved in the cooperating agency process. And I would anticipate a public draft, uh, EIS, um, potentially late this spring. I, I think it's gonna depend on what the EPA rules do and how that plays out. But I do anticipate a public document coming out, uh, in the next handful of months, anyway. Um, I know you've got the White Pine Pump Storage Project, uh, on your agenda coming up. Um, not a whole lot to report there other than the PUE Act. Uh, had a good discussion on it as did the Water Advisory Committee. Um, both are recommending cooperating agency status once we get into the EIS. Um, I do, there's been a little bit of confusion, uh, because of the water agreement and some of the other things going on county level as to where things stand with the EPA process. Um, so just maybe help clarify that a bit. And I would imagine the project component will do this later on. Uh, but they're still working on the baseline reports that would feed into the EIS. Uh, so the EIS process itself hasn't, um, hasn't initially launched, so to speak. Uh, they do have an application in with the BLM specific to their geotechnical investigation, uh, which would include three more holes and I believe, uh, some road improvements. Um, so in, in just in my opinion, I guess in closing this item out, I don't think it's too early to request, uh, request the cooperating agency status. Uh, probably from both, who will lead the main EIS and BLM, uh, who will lead the geotechnical investigation, uh, EPA process, whenever they determine that to be.
So Jeremy, at the, uh, at the public hearing yesterday, I did, uh, mention in that meeting that you and I had discussion and that it probably. that you and I had discussion and that it'd probably be on the next agenda so far as letters going out to the different agencies asking for that, uh, cooperating status.
Correct, Commissioner, and thanks for adding that. Um, I think, you know, on the next, uh, meeting agenda, it would be a good idea to, to draft a very basic letter to both FERC and, uh, BLM for, you know, consideration and possible approval by the commission. Yep. Um, we heard a little bit, uh, about, um, some draft orders coming out on April second. Just to clarify, that draft, uh, order is specific to the Humboldt River Basin. Uh, all the orders that came out last fall.